Ooh, that's a great question. I love that. I would say the two things that come to mind immediately are respect and trust. And I think the key way that you gain those two things is by listening as well as by not being reactive, right? I think you really need to take that time to be an active listener and not just give a gut punch. I mean, I think that's appropriate too, don't get me wrong. But I do think that if you're going to work effectively within a team, you have to get to know one another, build that trust, sort of understand where that other person is coming from before you, you know, kind of blow a hole in whatever it is they're trying to accomplish. And I think, again, being open to saying, you know, "I don't have experience with that," or "I don't really understand that," and really recognizing that nobody can know all the things. Yeah, I think that's an important piece, too.
My idea would be more of a comment when I looked at the resumes and you mentioned earlier about diversity. Each one of us has our own area of interest and expertise. And when I was thinking about trying to round out the board, we've got a really good perspective. We're very different from one another. And I liked your email, it was nonprofit, I liked your business background as an approach. I think that's something that we have some of, but would be very, very helpful going forward. So without meeting you or anything else, I really appreciated that. I'm sure you have a survival mode.
(laughing)
Not dropping with your board.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, you know, just as a general comment, I think if you would've told me back when I first went to college and got my French degree, and then went back and went to nursing school and said, "You know what, I'm going to be a bedside nurse forever. That's what I want to do. I want to take care of patients and families. That's where my heart is," and that's still where my heart is.
Excuse me?
But if you would've told me that I would go back to school and get an MBA, I would've laughed. But I have found for certain that it was one of the best things I ever did and really helped solidify, you know, and round out, you know, where my interests were in leadership. And so, again, was a huge learning opportunity. And I still, you know, I sit on our, as an example, on our investment committee as part of my role in senior leadership. And I learn things every single time we have a meeting because there's really smart CPAs and investment people in that room.
Yeah.
And that is not my skill set. So it's really, again, I see just the opportunity to learn and grow in all those things.
My last comment is I'm the least exposed education in anybody out here. And it's a wonderful learning experience to learn about education.
Yep.
Because it's not what I had the thought of us.
Yeah.
It's much more complex than that.
Sure.
So...
Well, I think that's one of the things, you know, in any, I would say that's, I've had that experience too, just in some of the board experiences that I've had, that it is almost never what I thought it would be, whether it's that in terms of the structure or how that board functions or what that organization does. And so it is really, truly, each and every time, I think you have to come up against, "What did I expect, but what is this really?"
Right.
And, you know, that's fun, actually. I enjoy that.
So with your kids, having gone through the school system not too long ago, you offer, you have a unique perspective. Can you offer some things gently?
(laughing)
As to what went right and what might need improvement?
Well, I, ooh, that's a question, that's a really, another good question. I think that, you know, my takeaway from their experience is that education, I think, you know, the parallel I would make to start is that, you know, knowing my experience in healthcare and that I've had a lot of experiences, as an example, taking care of patients in long-term care settings, right? We can all get really stuck in the cosmetics. This is a beautiful building, it's a beautiful facility, it's the best of everything, therefore that must somehow equate to the best care. I would say, I think there's a lot of, in my, in my thought process anyway, I think there's a lot of perception about that in terms of education. And I would say, from my perspective of the education that my two kids received in New Market, was top-notch. Are there issues? Of course, there's issues everywhere. But it was, you know, again, knowing that we went through multiple attempts to build a new school and, you know, and having participated in some of that and feeling like, sure, I would want my kids to have a nicer environment that's up to code and, you know, all of those sorts of things, but nonetheless feel that their education was very, very positive in that. There are things too, I think, about, you know, just comparing to my education back in the eighties at Exeter. Again, not a great education, but much bigger class size in terms of, you know, I graduated with 300, I think, kids, and my kids had a much more intimate...
So sorry, can you answer?
Quite all right. Intimate experience, and I think there's real value in that, too, in terms of it, small community, close-knit community, relationships that you form. So I like that aspect, too. So, again, I think an exciting time to think about this potential opportunity with all that's happening with the work on the schools and where is that taking the education caliber that already exists and going forward.
Yeah. You've got some great questions.
Susan, do you have any?
I know you haven't picked on me yet.
No, I thought I would be a listener tonight.
(laughing)
I mean, I think that you have, you know, certainly a wonderful background, and I think there's parallels between, you know, healthcare and...
Sure.
You know, human growth and development, which is kind of a similar...
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think, right, they, you kind of need one for the other, right? So I think that's part of...
Well, this is an important part of learning.
Right.
And so I think, you know, having a background in that area, as the other board members said, you know, certainly complement some of the backgrounds and attributes of...
Well, and I like the fact that your kids are out and you now get to see what that education gave.
Right.
What did we miss?
Right.
What could we improve on?
Right.
That's what I generally do.
Sure.
But that's, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Great. Anything else you'd like to...
Um, I mean, again, I think for me, some of my questions that I would have are more, you know, nuts and bolts. Again, if I were selected, I would just want to feel confident that I could do the full commitment and be, you know, again, so it's questions about meeting schedules and, you know, other commitment in terms of time and, you know, reading documents and those sorts of things. So again, I don't know that that's a question for right now, but I think just from my aspect, that's something I take very seriously. So again, would not look to accept it if I felt I could not...
I'll answer that.
Fully commit.
So this is my seventh year. There have been some years when I've done, this has been my full-time job, but we, I feel we are on the right track right now. We have that building, it's almost complete. I feel like we have a new leader that has a vision, the same vision as us. I see my hours going down between 10 and 15 now, I'm going to assume, between, but we did policies, so yeah, maybe only 10.[523.01][523.01](laughing) A week. But I would say 10 to 15. It depends, but usually 10 to 15.
Sure.
The major committees are the first and third Thursdays of the month of the core meetings.
Yep.
And then, you know, sometimes we have retreat situations on weekends or additional times. It might be, you know, 6:00 and sort of 7:00 for a non-public session, that type of thing.
Sure.
Those are the core, the core times.
Yep.
Although I can tell you, as you look at our schedule coming up in June, I'm sorry, July and August, we are, we've got strategy sessions ahead of us, we've got some learning schedule, I think we've got four pretty heavy meetings scheduled in July and August when typically school boards don't even meet.
Right.
So it's going to be some, and Susan can answer this better than I can, but we've got some heavy lifting ahead of us. The building's in pretty good shape, the facility stuff, we're, but in terms of getting our act together in terms of long-term planning, what do we really want to be, how do we want to get there? We as a board have never had the opportunity to, because we have, we've never had the facility to do that, and we're doing. So we're going to see some, I don't want to scare you away, but...
No.
We've got some Saturdays and Sundays lined up where, you know, you're going to be eating pizza for, so...
We'll do salad.
But I hope, I hope I'm not scaring you, but at the same time, we're going to be doing the bright stuff.
Right.
And I think, in a sense, that since that's up on the calendar with Susan coming in, it's actually a good time to sort of come into it...
Sure.
On the ground floor to be a part of the evolutionary process as we sort of start this whole relationship moving forward.
Most important is that you want to have a good time. I guess we're going to have some fun here. I mean, if you can't have a good time...
This is all of us, I really, we really don't get together, we don't like...
You don't like each other? I could tell that, actually, when I first walked in the room, that people don't really like each other here.
We have, I think, we have a really good group, Andrea, and I see a tremendous, with Susan as well, tremendous opportunity over the next year. But as you know, given all the things you've been involved with, you know, it's one thing to sit here and talk about it.
Right.
You've got to pick up a shovel.
Actually do it, yeah.
And we're all going to do that over the next year, but it's all going to be, we're never going to, we're never going to, we're never going to hate an hour of it. It's going to, it's going to be good, and we're going to do some good things, so, but it's...
It's going to be exciting here.
Yeah.
It is. It really is.
Yep. You know, and again, so I think for me, you know, knowing that I live in New Market but work in Concord, so, you know, again, my days are quite full, evenings and weekends, I have that flexibility. So again, that's, you know, from that aspect, not so much concerned about a number of hours as long as it's not like, "Hey, we need you here at 2:00," because that I, you know, really could not accommodate.
None of us can do that.
Yeah, so again, I just...
And never.
Yeah.
Thanks for letting us know.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I'm going to say this to everybody that leaves, and next year, you and Al are both up, so we, whoever doesn't, everybody has to run again anyways, right? Ingrid would have been up this year.
Yeah, so come March, this is just from now until March.
Oh, they're up.
Sure. Well, that was another, I mean, to be fully transparent, I mean, that's another sort of appealing piece of this, is that, again, it's an opportunity to try it on for size, you know, in a somewhat limited vein and then see, right?
And Andrea, that's exactly what, how I came on the board. This is the exact way.
Yep.
It was just October to March, so a little bit less time, but it was a good time to see, okay, this is the lay of the land, this is, because I knew nothing.
And it was chaotic.
Well, it was a good learning time, and then...
Shows you what kind of judgment she has, I mean, she actually ran.
Here she is.
She had signs made.
I did. So, you know, I think that's a good way to look at it, because it gives you a time to get your feet wet and determine the balance of everything before the election comes on.
Yep.
I'm going to say Ingrid was up this year.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, it was really a pleasure to meet everybody.
You too. Thank you.
Want Marty next?
Hi. How are you? Good, how are you? I'm good. Thank you for joining us. Yes, thank you.
You've met Susan a couple times...
Yes.
In the search committee, and you know all of us, so...
Yes.
So Marty, we just, as mentioned, we're having the three candidates in tonight to meet you, and not everybody knows you here, and talk about why you want to be on the board, what you think you could contribute, and we'll give you the opening statement.
So basically, what interested me when this, when it came, when this position opened up, was the fact that I'd been on the superintendent committee, and I, I think I'm currently still on the late start committee, we don't have any more meetings, but, and it just, it kind of fulfilled, like, not really a purpose, but just something that I really had an interest in. I found I really enjoyed it, the ins and outs of it, the, just the way things work. I know this community, you know, I've lived here for 13 years, I've been very involved in the schools. My kids will be in middle school this year, so I've subbed at the elementary school, you know, four years. I feel just, I have a good rapport with teachers, with the administration, and it's just something I feel in my heart that I wanted to do. I just feel, you know, during our interviews with you, Susan, I don't know, you struck, you struck something in me that kind of helped me, you know, "Hey, I'm going to go for this, I'm going to write a letter and, you know, see what happens." It's just something that you resonated with me to kind of light a fire under my butt, I guess. I'm sorry if I said that, to just kind of try this, you know? I'm like, it's until March, if it's something that doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, but if it's something I really enjoy, then I, you know, choose to run. So it's kind of a nice stepping stone for something that I feel like it would be a nice fulfillment, you know, to understand the ins and outs and the way things work and really hopefully try and provide some input to help with schools from, I mean, I know we're all parents here, but maybe from just being in and out of the schools as much as I have, you know, having that perspective and things like that.
As a parent of some kids in middle school, always interest, I ask this question, what could we be doing better with the school?
Well, they're not middle school yet. They will be sixth graders.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Nope, that's okay. You know, I haven't seen a lot in the junior high school yet. I've been on a lot, you know, I've just been on some meetings with Matt Foster, some committees and things like that with him, but my main goal is, I guess, communication is a big thing, and just making sure all of the kids are in a place they need to be, you know, no one's feeling shafted, no one's feeling left out, you know, things like that, just make everything, everybody inclusive. That's a big thing. You know, I have, I have twins, I have one child that's a little shyer than the other, and he, you know, he has a hard time, so I guess just, not a hard time, but in some situations, just maybe kind of like a little push, a little nudge, "Hey, come over here," just to make sure you're not having students sitting alone, unless obviously there are times when that's meant to be, but I think inclusiveness is very important, making sure everybody is treated on the same level regarding their academic levels or just their emotional levels, just kind of trying to bring the best out in everybody, and that's something that, that you really, I saw that with you, that I really liked.
Marty, one of the things that's most important is, you know, this team of five, including the person in six with Susan in terms of leadership. And, you know, in your working as a substitute in the other jobs you've had in volunteering the late start committee, what are some things that you have seen or some values that you think are important in effective teams?
Communication, that's, I'm always going to go back to communication. Without that, you pretty much don't have anything, everybody has to be on the same playing field, I guess. I also worked as a para for half a year when one had left, so I was also a para for, oh, it's been, my kids are going into sixth grade, they were in first grade, so I worked with four children on IEPs, and the value of that one-on-one, I thought, was a lot, but I also believe at the same time, it does need to be looked at in the schools and worked on because there were times that I was pulled out to help behavioral kids to, you know, and, you know, I'm here filling out Medicare or Medicaid, is it Medicaid? I can't remember now, Medicaid information into the computer as to how many hours I've been working with kids. Now I only put what I was working with. And so I guess the value in making sure if your job is to work with the IEP kids or work with cert kids, that that's your main focus. You know, I did mention that at one point while I was there, that I really shouldn't be working with a behavioral child, taking him out in the hallway so he's not a distraction to the rest of the class when I'm supposed to be in here for two hours with IEP children and helping them out. So really, a lot of communication. I know the resources are short, I know that's a big thing, and I guess just make the most of it, but really, that's all.
I appreciate the fact that you volunteered, that we've seen your face and we know who you are. So you kind of know what you're in for, so the hours won't, you're not worried about the time?
No, no. Nope, I am definitely, I have the time to commit, which is great, you know? I have a partner in crime at home.
Yeah, you can't be on the budget committee because of that.
No, no, well, no, no.
Because that's the rule, the new person gets the budget committee.
Well...
And negotiations.
And...
I don't know, do they have nepotism rules?
I know. That's why I thought, like, oh.
I don't, I don't know how much longer he's, I don't know how much longer...
He has to stay, that's the rule.
He probably will. He loves it.
Her husband's the chair.
No, he was the chair last year.
That's right.
Now he's...
Now it's Burns.
Yes. I think that, I think now he's vice chair.
Yes.
He's on the budget committee. He's been on, this might be his fourth or fifth year.
Might.
I think he did a third, three-year term already. He might be in the middle of his second three-year term.
Yeah.
Anyway, but yes, so. But yeah, I just feel like I, like, for me, this is something coming from the heart. You know, I know there's a lot to learn, I've actually been reading through the policies just to try, yeah, I know, it was...
You're the one?
I'm the one. You know, just to get myself familiar, I mean, a lot of them are just kind of, you expect, you know what they say, and, but some of them, I'm like, "Oh, I didn't know," or...
You think it's common sense, and then you're like, "Oh."
Right, right. So I've been, you know, working my way through that. You know, like I said, it's just I'm a face that people know, hopefully in a good way. I haven't heard or seen any different, but I just, yeah, I just like to be on here and try to do my part, see what I can do.
Well, the good news is that with all the training that we're going to go through, because we're, we're just reinventing all of us.
Right.
I think that's the way I'm looking at this, we're just, it's a new start. So it'll be a great time to be a part of this team and make you want to run again.
Okay. I'm here on the New Market. My kids have seven years of school left, so I'm here for at least that long.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, it was very nice to be here with you.
Thanks, Marty.
It's good to see you.
Yes, you too, again, welcome.
Thank you.
I know.
Thank you, Marty.
All right, thank you very much.
It was really neat kind of sitting up here.
Take care, Marty, thank you.
Hello.
Hey, Jen.
Hello, Jen.
How you doing?
Over here.
Yeah.
People call Jen, Jennifer.
Jen's good.
Jen.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
I have Susan Givens.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Jen, we've met at numerous swim meets.
Yes.
Do you know Al? I don't know if you've met Al.
I have not met Al before, no.
No.
Nice to meet you.
Him and Elizabeth, I don't know if you...
Jen, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Yeah.
And Elizabeth.
Jen tried to teach me to knit.
To knit?
I did.
Let's say that didn't go well.
I don't remember, I don't remember many lessons.
I watched, as I said.
It was fun.
So thank you for coming. We just wanted to give all the candidates an opportunity to meet us, and we meet you, and what we've done with the other candidates is just have them, you know, explain why they want to be on the board, what you can contribute, what, and you've answered some questions about time commitments and all that, if you have those, too, so, but why don't you just start and we'll take it from there?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, where to start? Well, I'm a firm believer in good public education. I've been in public education my whole life, or, well, until I, until I stopped teaching. But I was, I was schooled that way, my daughter's been in the school system here since first grade, I love the New Market school system specifically. I am impressed by things that are done in the school system all the time, and also recently I've been working on the late start committee, so I'm also seeing some things that I like, I like, and some things that I think could be improved, and I saw that you had an open spot, and I thought that if I could help in any way, I would love to help. So if you thought of the people that applied, that I could be helpful, that's what I wanted to do, so.
Can you describe your background a little bit?
Sure. So, let's see, my background, I went to school for a really long time, and I got a degree in social psychology, so studying how people influence each other. And then I taught at university level for, full-time for 12 years, part-time for a number of other years, and so that's my background in education. Let's see, more recently, I've been working for a primary care physician, so, and then, but also had been involved in a number of different committees in my career along the way. So I've worked a lot with committees, specifically around education when I was teaching, different aspects of education, and then recently, like I said, I've been working on the late start committee for the last two years with Marty, who was just here for the last year. And I was on the link-together board for a few years as well, when my kid was in elementary school, and so, that's...
Who's in East Coast?
Up and down the East Coast. So I started at UNC, which is where I was, where I got my PhD.
In Chapel Hill?
In Chapel Hill, yep.
Yeah.
And then up at Endicott, Holy Cross, UNE, and lastly at USM in Portland.
Jen, look, one of the things that is the most important for me on the board is the teamwork that we have among the five of us and six with Susan. And, you know, in the committees that you've been on with the student affairs, work that you've done, working in the doctor's office, what are some attributes that you've seen of highly effective teams?
Communication is key, and not, not keeping it to yourself, you know, for fear of stepping on someone's toes, or, I mean, I'm a firm believer in taking someone else's perspective and being sensitive to other, where people are coming from, but also believe that we need to speak our mind as well. So I think that that's, that's really important. Where I'm working right now, I'm with a team that really respects each other, and so it works really well for the most part. So I think that's, that's, kind of they go together, the communication and the respect. You can't have one without the other. And then, so my little thing, this is what I studied in grad school, was trust, so that also if you can trust your teammates or your committee members to, that they're going to listen and respect what you have to say, then that helps a lot, too, so.
Thank you. So you're familiar with the school system?
Yes.
And what do you think we do right, and what do we need to improve?
What do we do right? I think, from what I see, we always try to put the students first. Um, yeah, I think, I think that, you know, that might sound, that's what the school system is supposed to be doing, but, you know, sometimes other things get in the way, other motivations come up and, and all of that. So I think that we do a really good job with that. I think that we do a really good job of considering how to spend the money, and so the tab, you know, I've been at a number of deliberative sessions in town, so I've seen how that works from that, and then, you know, handing it off to the school board to do what, what, what needs to be done that way. I've always trusted in the school board to do that sort of thing. So I feel like money is not spent willy-nilly, I feel like it's well-considered, I feel like we put the students first. What we need to do better, it's, it's hard to say without a specific thing in mind to say what, what would need to be done better. Generally speaking... Generally speaking, and, and again, I don't want to... I, I guess communication could always be better, um...
In terms of like what's going on?
What's going on, I mean, we, I, I read this, the newsletter that comes out with the school, um, and, and then I try to read the one that comes out for the town every, every month. Um, but I sometimes feel like there could be more information there. Um, when I, and I don't, when I go onto the town, um, website and the school board website, sometimes I find it hard to find. So, um, I can say, so when my kid was in elementary school, there was not much on the elementary school website at all. So I can't really speak to that because I haven't looked at it lately. Um, the, with the junior, senior, um, high school website, I find that that also is, it's not always kept up to date. And, and I get, so now I'm getting really picky, you know, like, these are, these are like the little things, but, you know, it's not always kept up to date, it's not, doesn't always have the information that I'm looking for. And, um, isn't easy, easy to find, so that, that's the kind of thing that I think, but, but, you know, whether that's the purview of the school board in particular, I, you know... I don't know if it is, but, but that, that would be the kind of thing that jumps to the front of my mind.
The changes that are happening within this next year, um, it is going to be time-consuming?
Okay.
Um, I don't think it's as ti- time-consuming as we've known it to be, but I think we're going to really try to come together as a team, and there's going to be a couple of weekends, there's going to be some late nights. But is that going to be an issue for you?
Um, I don't think so, I haven't put myself, you know, forward to, for anything like this before because I hadn't thought that I had, I had the time that I could do it. Um, so when this came up, I thought about it carefully, and I thought, well, now I could. So, um, I don't put myself forward unless I know I can meet the time commitment. Now, of course, I don't know exactly what the time commitment is, but I, if I didn't feel confident that I could make it work, then I, I would not have applied or sent my letter in. Um, so, so yes, I, I think that I, that I could make that work, and also I felt like, since I didn't feel like I had time before, now I do, I feel like we've been that... Almost 16 years, and so I feel like if I could help, then it's time to step up, so, yeah.
It's going to be good work over the next year, I think, Jen, we gotta, I think, and I said this before, we, I think we have a really good team with all of us and Susan starting, it's, it's a, it's a sort of a fresh start.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we'll be completing the building.
Yeah.
And, um, that, we'll have that behind us, that sucked out a lot of energy, and, you know? And, um, so we can focus on, there'll be a visioning process happening, you know, in the, in the too distant future, once Susan gets settled and understands what we have and don't have and all that, and, um, but that's good work.
Yeah.
Um, but it, it's going to take a lot, it does take a lot of work, I mean, this is, this is a board, everybody's sort of picked, picked up and, 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 with one thing or another, like me with facilities, you know, Kim with the policies, you know, SST, and Al, Al with the building as well. We've all sort of gravitated to those things, but it, it's a lot of spade work, it really is, I, I, um, I almost feel sometimes like these meetings are kind of the only thing that the public really sees, but we do so much other work, you know, whether it's meeting with, you know, folks or answering questions or stuff, so...
Right.
There's a, it's tolerable, I work full-time.
Yeah.
With two kids, you know? But Taylor just got her license, so I don't have to drive her to swim meets.
Right.
It's good.
She could make money driving her kids.
I'm sure she could.
But it's a labor of love, and I think, uh, it'll be good, good work over the next year.
Just as a little aside, my daughter saw you in school, um, must have been ma- made, she's like, does Taylor's dad work at the school?
Yeah, he doesn't get paid, but he's there.
She thinks he's wearing, he's wearing a suit, and he's all of a sudden, I was like, I think that he was doing something else there at the time.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of those, yeah.
But no, I, I recognize that it would be, um, that, that there would be time outside of meetings, um, as well.
Hopefully not as much, I mean, hopefully we'll keep our superintendent a while, so we don't have to have two superintendent searches. Um, that, I'm hoping that we're going to get this down. Between communication amongst each other, keeping our meetings consistent, we're going to be okay. All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you a question, so, so you've been teaching at the end of every number of years.
Yes.
So, I teach at the graduate college side.
Oh, okay.
A question to you would, would be, what do you see are biggest differences between students today, or more currently when you taught, versus students that were coming to you early in your career?
Early? So, now, just, just to be clear, I haven't been teaching for a few years now. Um, I still have a lot of friends who teach, um, but when, so, let's see, and as an under, when I taught as an, I taught as a lot of different places. So it was different depending upon where I was. Um, I found that, um, so where I spent the most, most of my time was at UNE. And I found there was a wide range of what the kids came to UNE with, so, real wide range. Um, and so some were just ready to go and really took advantage of the, the, you know, of the professors being available to them whenever they wanted. Other ones really needed you to help them figure out, okay, what am I supposed to be doing here? So, uh, wait, wait, what, what can I get out of this? Um, they were very much, you know, they was just, oh, this is the next step, this is what I do after high school, so, so they, they needed more of that. Um, I'm fine, I'm hearing that there's more of that than there used to be, so there's many more kids that are, like, this is what I do next, and, and... UNE was an interesting place because there were a lot, quite a few, um, kids, or quite a, quite a proportion of them, that were first-generation college students. So there was a lot of pressure on them because of that, and also, they didn't really have anybody, they didn't have the guidance that, um, so we provided it. Um, so, so yeah, I think there's, there's a lot more of that, um, needing more guidance. I'm hearing from my former colleagues that there's a lot more parental involvement. Also, on the other, the flip side of that, is there's a lot more of the helicopter parenting, or the snowplow parent, parenting, or whatever you want to call it, um, that's going on there as well. When I was there, um, there wasn't as much of that, um, so... So, yeah, I guess that's, that would be some...
Would that reflect what's happening below, in, in schools?
I would suspect so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's not just what happens in schools, I think it's what's happening in communities as well.
Culture, yeah.
So, I think it's a change in dynamics within, uh, parenting, as well as resources available in the community.
Yeah.
And part of it's student readiness, and students are, are entering a world very different than the world that we all enter perhaps, you know, when we graduate from high school.
A bigger emphasis on training for a specific job, even at a, a liberal arts college, there, there seems to be that as well. So there was a lot of, um, you know, what is this degree going to buy me? And that's coming at it both because we're, parents and kids are investing so much in the education, coming away with so much debt, it's like, it's got to be worth it. Show me how it's going to be worth it, there's that, um, but there's also this shift in even non, uh, not-for-profit, um, universities towards more of a business model? Um, as opposed to education? First is more business-first, and that is disconcerting to me.
Yeah.
Yep, you see it when they staff all the kids in the dorm rooms, four and a double, you know?
Or worse yet, in, in freshman English?
Yes, and who's teaching those classes? Exactly.
Right, right. Anything else, any other questions? Okay.
Well, thanks for having me!
Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm going to, uh, uh, seek a motion to enter into non-public pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 91A, colon, 3, Roman 2, B and C.
Still move.
Roll call vote, Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Mr. Shelton? Ms. McKinney? Aye. Yes, we are in non-public, so...
I know. I dressed for summer. I'll know better for next time. I'll keep a parka in my office.
And we messed up with that stupid 1%? We did? We shot ourselves in the foot? We did, we did?
Thank you, just give us a heads.
I know, but we did, we did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we just came out of non-public, we're back in our public session now.
We did, it wasn't...
And the first order of business is to, I got to turn to that page, um, is Pop Off Award.
Yay!
Glad you guys could come.
Second ago. We give this award out every year, um, because of the generosity of Nick Popoff, who lived in town, I was here three years, I think I met him once, I was fortunate enough, I, like, I came here in 2003. When you meet a guy like that, it changes your life, you only meet a few of those in your lifetime, he was, he was just so genuine, and, you know, he didn't even have to open his mouth to see what a genuine, caring guy he was. He was generous enough to establish an award, um, to be given out to, to, um, school employees every year, who promoted those, those values. Um, so, uh, Patty Welch is, you're here with us tonight, is, is one of the recipients, um, and Holly Geeky as well. Um, and it is right up in our materials, I'm not going to read the whole thing, um, but you've exemplified those characteristics that Mr. Popoff, um, held so dear, and, um, we thank him, and we thank you for being that type of person for our school community and our kids, so... Um, I know, um, you've already received your award in, in the school ceremony, but we wanted to invite you here tonight to thank you, if you'd like to say a few words.
You, you might want to hear what both of them have done, like a quick blurb, just because Susan doesn't really know, and she should know what's happening, I know you guys don't want to do it, I... Patty has a, um, a pet.
They don't want to talk about themselves?
She has a, a reading dog, she brings her dog to the school, um, and helps kids learn to read with this Boston Terrier. And Bodie, and there's all sorts of things, people love Bodie, that's it, and Holly, what did Holly do?
I, I shall read.
Yes, I had my, my blank.
Um, in, in my apology, I thought Sean was coming tonight to give his presentation, so I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't prepared to do this, so I, my apology, and, and I won't, I'm not going to pretend to read this, if you want to...
Thank you, Holly, I'm having a brain fart.
So, what I do is every morning I am in charge of kindergarten duty, and the kindergarteners come into the music room, and I create a different days for them. So Mondays, we have just a play day, so they can come in and play with blocks, and Legos, and cars, and whatever dollhouses. Tuesday, we have game days, so I have board games that they come in, because kids today do not play with games. And so we have Candyland, we have Twister, we have Don't Spill the Beans, Don't Break the Ice, any type of game that I can bring in and help them play, Light Bright. Um, Wednesday, we do Puzzle Day to work on spatial awareness, and, uh, Thursday is Fine Motor Day, we do coloring, cutting, hole punching, um, working with Geoboards, with elastics. And Friday is Movement Day, which we, I used to do, um, an optical course, then I would borrow equipment from the OT room, but since the new construction of the music room, it's not coming, so we don't do that anymore. So what we do is cooperative ducks, instead of musical chairs, we do musical ducks, and so we play a CD, stop the music, and they have to do skipping, hopping, walking backwards, anything like that. But I couldn't do that without Kelly Galloway, she helps me as well, and I get some donations, but mostly I, I buy it myself or I bring it in, but that's...
That's what, that's what I do, and I try to make it fun so that they're not just sitting there waiting, because some kids are there for 45 minutes.
Right.
And then this year, we, we, um, did the Breakfast Club, so we have the student council come in, and with the kids that eat breakfast in the morning, they take them out, they sit with them, they... Because they took the door away from the music room, so we couldn't, we could no longer supervise, so that's, that's what I do.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. Basically, you bring joy to the morning.
Yes.
You know, these aren't happy children.
We try to make it fun, because when they first come into kindergarten, it's a whole new world.
I like those new spaces, though.
I lo- I love the music, I love it, it's... Yeah, it's, uh, the gym is, you know, wonderful. Yeah, the music room, everything is just really good, yeah.
Well, thank you both for everything you do, because again, anything that makes children happy in the building makes the building a happy place. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And, um, so we're going to move our agenda a little bit, um, tonight, um, we have, uh, Dawn Jutton from Municipal Resources, and, yeah, if you want to step up, Dawn, Dawn, thank you, uh, thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
And, um, MRI did a, um, a study of the town and, uh, school business offices, um, over the last couple, two or three months, and, um, Dawn and his team drafted their, their summaries and their thoughts, and I, uh, we asked Dawn to come tonight to be able to answer some of our questions, uh, if we had any. Um, but also to sort of give us a summary of how we got to the, you know, to the letter and the conclusions and what was done, and, and just sort of a summary of conclusions, we've all, we've all read the letter, I don't know if the public has, but...
Well, essentially, um, after assessing the situation, the, the, the bottom line was you were, the, the attempt, as I understand it, was a consolidation of finance operations. Um, it was at best a half-hearted effort, um, as far as I'm concerned, a failure of management, it was, it was not properly planned, uh, it was poorly executed. Um, the way I characterize it is that, uh, one person can ride a bicycle, but one person can't ride two unicycles at the same time, and that's essentially what you asked, uh, the person to do. And so there was no real, uh, everybody was in charge and nobody was in charge, nobody took the lead, and so there was no project management, um, and the person was left to kind of drift. The, uh, the concept from the get-go was weak in terms of taking a, what amounted to a full-time BA position, and trying to put it in a bag and shake and assume that you would be able to cover all the bases. And you turned out covering none of the bases and making the person nuts in terms of, uh, the, the amount of work and, and, um, the, the different directions that you had to go in. And so if, if circumstances were different, we would probably have recommended how to fix it, but just the dynamics of the current situation, you have a superintendent who's about 15 minutes in, um, the, the, um... minutes in, the town is better than halfway through implementation of a new software package, which we think was also probably poorly conceived. If you're going to consolidate your finance operation, you should have a single software package. And so it's not clear to us how that happened. The software is manufactured by the same folks who have the school software, and so we thought that it probably would have been prudent to have a conversation about how those things might work together. So at the end of the day, you have, the town lost its IT person, the IT person is retiring. So, you know, at this point, kind of the notion of trying to force it through with the person who was responsible leaving, new superintendent coming onboard, who's gonna, it's going to take a while just to get oriented and learn what's going on. It just seemed like an opportunity for creation of chaos.
Does anyone have any questions about those conclusions?
No, having it's, basically bicycle/unicycle is an easy way to put it. It's a nice way to step, be able to step back and say, let's table this, look at it another time, when we're more organized and we're not so adrift.
Don, when you did your assessment, did you look at, you know, basic kind of workflows and systems and structures on both sides? Or was that not part of your...
Well, what we discovered was there was not, I mean, we came in to look at what we thought was kind of a consolidated operation, and it wasn't. It was two separate, distinct operations. I mean, the only thing they had in common was the, was the office in the middle. And so there was no, the folks in the positions had no notion that they were to be sharing services or sharing workload. And so we didn't, we frankly didn't drill down a whole lot. I mean, it became quickly obvious that we were called in because the person in the, trying to fill the role, had reached the end of her rope, and it essentially had said, "I can't do this anymore." So we were brought in to look at, at least initially, was it more work than one people, one person could handle? And then what we discovered was, the answer was yes, but not, not for the reasons that we thought they would be. It was just, there was no, there was no implementation plan, there was no communication to the people who were expected to do the work. There was no workflow analysis done at the front end, so that, you know, payrolls were on cycle, payables were, happened when payables happened. And it just made no sense in terms of trying to figure out if it could be fixed, given what's happening around it. I mean, having you come in this week and, you know, saying to you, "Sorry, we, you know, they've got to pay attention to those things. You can't not do payroll, you can't not do payables." And so our sense was, look, just since you hadn't made any changes, just continue, just continue to do what you're doing with two, essentially two operations. It's fairly simple and straightforward. This is, you know, individually and combined, it's not a huge operation. And so it's, it should be fairly easy to continue to keep things going, and then if you decide you want to, you want to go forward, I'd encourage you to kind of build a plan. But the only thing I would, I would suggest you look at, if there's sincere interest in going ahead, is having someone talk to Tyler and see if it's too late to work some sort of a deal with them about coming up with one software. I know the town is, you know, two-thirds of the way through. And, you know, frankly, I'm not sure that anybody's heart was in it.
The thing that saddens me the most about it is, you know, since this is the recommendation that this is not a successful situation, is that we subjected employees on both sides to this for this amount of time. That's a part that, you know, particularly the one that said, and she turned out to be correct, that individual did, that this is too much. And it just makes me sad that that went on as long as it took.
Well, I would say that probably the saddest part is that if you don't learn from the experience. I mean, if you come to the conclusion that this won't work, you're wrong.
It just wasn't set up properly.
Right. I mean, you can't, you can't, you know, build a house without a set of plans.
Right.
And so, you know, the people who are supposed to do the work show up, and you just say to them, "Do something."
Right.
And so they do something. And then, you know, when you can't, when you can't put the roof on, you can't assume that houses can't be built. And in, you know, this instance, as I said, it was really a failure, a failure of management and pre-planning.
And communication.
I agree about the learning aspect of things, that it's not a failure if you, unless you just forget all the mistakes you just made, or we just made, I should say. There, if we should revisit this down the road, are you aware of examples comparable in New Hampshire that we might...
Probably, well, I'd have to dig through it. I mean, there are, we do a lot of outsourced finance operations, so I can tell you it's doable. I mean, we do schools, we do towns, we do water districts, sewer districts. And so it's doable. I don't, off the top of my head, in New Hampshire, I can't point to a, to a place where they've, where they've consolidated. Frankly, it's, well, you, some of you have heard the story. I mean, my view is New England is 1,700 towns and cities all doing the same thing in 1,700 different ways. And so we struggle with this notion of independence and autonomy and not working together. There are some examples in Massachusetts that do it successfully, there are some examples in Maine that do it successfully. We have, we have folks with expertise in both, both areas, and we learned a long time ago that it's, it's doable, but there's got to be the will to do it. And, and you can't, you know, New Hampshire's stupid cheap when it comes to operations. And so you can't implement without spending a little more money at the front end. And so, you know, I mean, that's what, what you tried to do here was take a person who had essentially a full-time job and say, "Oh, while you're doing that, do this too." Without any direction, without any mission, without any experience in the consolidation piece, with limited experience in terms of either, either operation. But, you know, there are, there are hosts of private sector examples. I mean, one of the things we recommend to our communities, and two-thirds of them don't listen, is that you try to set it up as a service bureau. So it's not a question of, you know, one person trying to report to two bosses. I mean, our whole business, we work in about 600 different communities. Our, all of our relationships are contracted. You know, they tell us what they want, we tell them what it's going to cost, and we deliver the goods. And so that's the way I would propose you set this up if you're going to go ahead with it, is you have a service bureau, and the employees are employed in that service bureau. And, you know, you schedule with the two clients. So you have a superintendent, and you have a manager, and you have to get payroll done, and you have to get payables out, and you have to get budgets developed. But technology is such anymore that it's, it's almost a no-brainer if you, if you set the foundation up solid from the beginning. And, you know, then the school does what its core service is about, which is delivering education, and municipality does what its core service is about, which is delivering community services. And, you know, the back office stuff gets done in a relatively professional way, hopefully very professional way.
Donny, the whole point of all of this effort was, you know, can, can we bring some consistency to things, and can we save money and better allocate that money elsewhere?
Absolutely.
You know, and is that, is that a possibility? It's tough, because you don't fully know what our baseline is here, right? What our, you know, our cost in delivery, well, you know what our delivery is. What, this is a, this is a tough question I'm throwing at you, but what, what might we stand to gain here? I mean, are we talking tens of thousands, hundreds? I mean, I mean, it's, give me a sense of the scale. Is something like this worth the effort, or do we just keep our old New England ways of doing 17,000 different things?
At the end of the day, the price will be paid by students and people who get sub-quality services. Essentially what happens, I mean, there's, there's a limit to the elasticity. You, your community's made some very serious commitments financially in the last five or seven years. And so at some point, you know, you're, you're going to reach the ability, the limit of the ability of this community. You know, New Hampshire struggles with funding its public services. You deliver education. Look at what's going on in the state of New Hampshire today. It's embarrassing. We've made our kids liabilities. And yet, you know, we've got a legislature that won't step to the plate. We've got, you know, some of our client communities, Berlin is a long-term client, they closed their last elementary school. That's an indictment of all of us. How are we letting this stuff happen? But it happens. And so, you know, what's, what's the answer? The answer is to eliminate the duplication and redundancy. That's the problem of New Hampshire. We don't, it's not a tax problem, it's a duplication and redundancy problem. It's not just about schools. I mean, we have 234 towns and cities, 234 police stations, fire stations, 91 school superintendents, you know. And you leave New England, and we do things very differently, much more efficiently, much more effectively. So, you know, do I, do I think you could save money? Absolutely. I mean, if I was younger and had more energy, I'd, I'd show you how to do it. But it's, it's eminently doable. It's just, it's the will to do it. So, you know, what would I do? One of the things I would do is I would incentivize, if you want to do it, I'd incentivize, one is I'd get the, first thing is I'd get the town council in here. And so together, you look at your superintendent, they look at their town administrator, and say, "Your next compensation adjustment is tied to getting this done." I'd give her a year or so.
I was going to say, can we just give her a break from here?
I guess I would argue, I'm tired not to do that, to provide world-class educational programs here.
Absolutely. I'm not saying, I'm not saying you would be the doer, but you, you are, you are the executive in the school organization. And the failure was two executives unable to deal with making it happen. I'm not suggesting that you would, you would do it. I mean, one of the, one of the issues that we encountered was your predecessor was doing some, was filling some of the holes that resulted from a poor implementation plan.
And like you said, it's that foundation.
That's not how you do it.
Which means she can't do other things with that time.
Right.
Well, absolutely. And so it's, it's, but the, I guess my view was, the policy wasn't flawed, the management approach was flawed.
Because of a lack of foundation.
A lack of planning. Plan, there was no strategy, there was no vision in terms of, what's this going to look like when we're done? Responsible, there were, you know, the employees were never brought together and said, "This is what we're going to do, these incrementally, this is how we're going to approach it. And so you're going to learn this person's job, you're going to shadow this person's job." None of those things happened. And so they continued to do what they continued to do, only they put somebody in the middle office and said, "Make this all happen without a roadmap."
Yeah.
Happened.
I appreciate the honesty, and I appreciate the letter, and...
No, this report makes it even more, it makes me more reassured that we needed to have this piece of this happen.
Yeah.
Because there was some, is this the way to go or not? And I think that this shows me and reconfirmed my commitment that this was the right answer. To have you come in and say, "This is what it is, and these are the reasons why."
And again, I'd hate, I'd hate to have you come to the wrong conclusion. Because it's, you know, in my view at least, the conclusion is not that shared services between local government entities is not the future. It's that you gotta, you gotta manage your implementation. You know, you've got to find out, what are you going to, what are you going to do? Why are you going to do it? How are you going to do it? Who's going to do it? How long is it going to take? And what's it going to cost? And so if it costs you an extra $10,000 to save $100,000 over the next 10 years, I mean, the problem with, with local government services in New Hampshire is we'll spend a buck to avoid spending a dime.
Anything else? Don, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Fun? If there's anything we can do, we give us a shout.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, well, we didn't have public comment yet, but I'll open it up for public comments, since there's nobody here, that'll go quick. School Board Committee reports. And I'll go first. Al, jump in on the, on the facilities thing, too. But we, we attended a facilities tour on Tuesday. There's just about every trade you can think of is in the high school right now, demolition. There's a lot going on, high level. They've essentially, you know, torn apart all the walls and had, had a look at things that are inside, all those things that we kind of wondered, you know, what's behind those walls. They've now seen, and knock on Formica, that there's not, there's nothing there that really surprised anybody, okay? It doesn't mean we're out of the woods yet, but that, that's, that was a phase that, you know, even, you know, even Ekman was, you know, weary of, you know, so...
Yeah, it was a scary, it was a scary thought.
So you don't know. So that, that's a positive. And they're on schedule still, they're on budget. You know, there's going to be change orders here and there for things that still come up. We hope, hopefully, you know, only on the, on the minor end of things. But they're confident that they're, that they're on schedule or ahead of it for just about every aspect of the high school and the elementary school. The elementary school's still slated to be done at, before school starts, everything. So, you know, I think our next building committee meeting is next week, it's July 16th. That's all I had, Al. I don't know if you noticed any other...
Yeah, we also, every, it just came up as a subject, was introducing people to the new building. And the project manager felt as though at the end of August, things would be cleaned up enough to invite public into the building to see it. I thought that was a really good idea. It's, it's absolutely amazing when you're walking in the walls, in the, in the doors. The high school, that's not the case, because things are so torn up.
Right.
So the board, the public, I think we should think about a good, I think people are going to be absolutely knocked, shoot, they're going to knock their shoes off when they're going to walk in that building.
Yeah. It's definitely a positive experience. Any more, Al?
Well, the only other thing is, and I think it's, it's been clear to everybody that all of those areas are upside to everybody now. Things are hanging off walls, and Mike and I climbed through with... Able to get people in at this point to see anything.
No, no, it's not.
There's a reason why there's a gate around it, and it's locked.
Yeah. There's lots going on.
One more thing, our, our site people, Julie and Danny, are top-notch. They're as, they're as committed to the students, to the community, as I've ever seen construction men. They're just...
They were here Friday, July 5th, and over the weekend, and they, they just, they know how to do it. They put it together. I mean, a lot of these folks, when they're doing demolition work, are day laborers, and you don't know who's going to show up from day to day. And, you know, Danny explained that they had a little challenge over that weekend, but they, they pulled through and got what they, they needed done. If I can just, I'm going to jump down the agenda just a little bit, because this topic is related, about a building dedication ceremony. And this is just, I wanted to put this on the, on the table for the board and Susan's discussion. Greg had been working on a, you know, a proposed plaque for the, for the elementary school, and it might have been, these materials are the ones before, with the, with the understanding that we might do a elementary ceremony at the beginning of, end of August, beginning of school, and have that plaque there. I'm just going to throw out my thinking on it. First of all, I, out of a sense of sort of completeness, I would almost want to do the one ceremony at the end of all the construction.
It's one project.
Because, yeah, because then you know you're done, there's, there's nothing outstanding, you know? And, and you bring, you bring, you're going to bring, we've got to do it right, too, because we've done a lot of work, and a lot of people have been involved in this. And, you know, the end of August, for all of us, in getting back into school, teachers aren't going to have that school for very long, once the contract is got out. It's going to be hectic. So I don't, I just don't think it's the right timing to try to push it at that point.
Agree.
You know, the building's going to be there, then we'll wait till we're done. And then, you know, hopefully we say, "Look, we, we got this done, we're either on budget or under it," you know? And everything's done, we could have, we can tour, we can have an open house in both buildings, and really, really do it right. And I think... And I think, you know, one plaque is probably new market, you know? Not one at each school. And let's make sure we get that right and recognize all the people we should. Those are just my thoughts. I think it's, that's maybe sometime in, at the end of, end of next school year, perhaps?
I agree with that.
If the construction goes accordingly.
Because it is one project. And until the entire project is finished, I think it's inappropriate to celebrate half of it.
I agree.
Okay, so, no need to vote on that. I just wanted to discuss it. I don't know if you had any thoughts, Susan?
I think that makes sense.
Makes sense.
Wait until we get settled and school open next year, when the high school's done. And then we can do something that makes sense for the community. You know, I think it's nicer if everybody's settled and in and the teachers, you know, got their classrooms set up and we're kind of in our groove. And then in the fall, have that. To try to push it before school starts or something, that would be just very, too disruptive to teaching and learning. So, I would wait until we open schools in the fall and then, you know, do something, you know, appropriate.
That makes sense.
So, it looks like a school too. By then, like you said, the teachers will be in their classrooms. It will be pretty.
Well, it's always nice when kids are in the school.
Because they're the heartbeat.
I think that makes the other meeting all that more important, I love it, when we are finished with the elementary school. Because I hear a lot of comment about, you know, it looks like you guys aren't kids, you know, what's going on there? So, I don't think it needs to be a celebration, but a nice.
Like a tour.
Nice, you know.
Open house.
I think it would be absolutely a wonderful idea because then it gives people the sense of, "Oh, we're making great progress. This is so exciting. Our investment was worth it." I totally agree with that.
Yeah, we could also do, I'm sorry.
Doing an evening.
Yeah, maybe something in the gym.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something that doesn't interrupt the day.
It'll lend more credibility to the progress we're making in the high school if they look back and see.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're right, Al. Because I think people sometimes, they might point out some negative things, like with drainage or, you know, dust or, but, you know, they get in there and they see it done, they think, "Okay, it's worth it." You know, because we've seen it. A lot of other folks haven't.
I think it'll also help, you know, it's very disruptive to teaching and learning. I think we learned that this year. And it creates challenges for students, parents, everybody. And so, if they can see in a concrete way, one building done, then it'll give them a little energy to help them remember that we're going through this pain in order to receive this wonderful gift the communities are giving us.
I hope they understand that tax increase a little bit.
Yeah, for the community members. But also for staff to be able to, you know, if the high school staff or middle school staff can kind of walk through and see what they have in store for them in the future. I think that it's just very uplifting. I think there's little things you can do like that.
Really good point. It's like a boost, oh.
Yeah. Keep us, yeah, grounded.
So, in terms of other committee reports, I know that on policies, we had some more that we originally thought we might put on this agenda. But since Susan's just starting and, you know, it's, we decided to put those off for now.
I mean, I think, Mike, that's totally valid. The core ones we went through, there are some that were not touched, but not that many. And I think that there's time to get those. We left the core of them in a good place for the next three to five years.
Absolutely.
Without legislative changes and stuff.
Yep, yep, so.
Do you think it's pretty?
It's good.
For some period?
For a period of time, for the core. I mean, obviously, there's legislative changes and things that come in that need to be addressed, which they always have been. But the baseline foundation is at a point that it hasn't been at for a while. So, I think we're good.
And my sense is 90-plus percent was legislated anyway. We had input to.
A lot of, you know, modifications, deletions were based on legislative changes or suggestions from the school boards or that type of thing.
And that's it? SST's not?
We didn't have a meeting.
Doing anything right now in budget? It really isn't, isn't doing much these days. So, the next thing on the agenda was a superintendent's report and Susan's prepared something for us.
Yes, so in your packet, I just figured I'd give you a little update on the paraprofessional NEA status. So, had reached out to Nicole Argays or?
Ar Graves.
Ar Graves.
Yep.
And, you know, introduced myself and then invited her and whoever the officers for the new unit would be to come and meet with me. I offered them my first three days here anytime, before I scheduled anyone else. And they chose the 18th at 1:00. So, we are going to be meeting then so that I can hear what their concerns are and we can talk about how to move forward from here. So, I just wanted to let you know that I had reached out to them. I've corresponded a little bit and that we'll be meeting next week. And I'll report back to you after that, when I learn. The second item is related to Agenda Item 3E, which is a job description change. It's like modification to the junior, senior high school assistant principal. The person that's currently in the position has resigned and later in the agenda, you'll be accepting his resignation. And so, I'd like to move forward with posting the position as soon as this weekend. As I reviewed the job description, I offered a few changes that I would like to make to it. Mostly just, you know, some edits. I'd like to add a little verbiage here and take a little away in other places. But the substantive change I would like to bring forward to you tonight is to increase the work year for this position by 10 days. And I developed the salary range based on the current salaries that we're paying assistant principals and then dividing it by their 206-day work year and then multiplying that up to a 216-day. So, it wouldn't be for all assistant principals. It would just be for the assistant principal whose assignment would be focused on the high school to increase the work year there, which is more customary in education to have your assistant principal at the high school level work a longer year than those at the elementary and middle school. So, that would be my recommendation. It would not, it would be cost neutral for this year, for the most part. I mean, depending on what the candidate, of course, would arrange. Really be using those 10 days necessarily in this first year. But it would set us up to hire the person for the right school, for the right number of workdays for the year for the future. I guess I would entertain a motion to accept the changes in the job description with the salary range and the work year as presented.
May I have such a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 A second resignation that we had was from our school business official. And I've had several conversations with her as well as her new employer, which is Benford. They currently do not have a school business administrator. That person left about a month ago. So, they've been without for a period of time. So, I had a conversation, a nice conversation with the superintendent there. And we've come up with a transition plan so that they could have some coverage from Lisa starting this week and that we would have continued coverage from Lisa a couple of days a week, you know, till the middle of August. So, that's what's agreeable to both parties. The other part of our transition plan would be bringing in a consulting firm on an interim basis, part-time, let's say, two and a half days a week until we're able to make a decision about what we want to do for hiring in that position and then going through the process of hiring and appointing. So, that would be the transition plan, kind of a two-part piece. But what the consultant will also do is that once Lisa leaves, we will, the likelihood that we'll actually have another full-time person here by the time Lisa leaves is pretty much slim to none. So, it will give us some transition from Lisa to the consultant. The consultant will be in place. And then when we get the new person, there'll be some transition there. The other thing that's, that I'm really gonna value and appreciate out of this consulting arrangement is that we will get a report at the end. And that's one of the reasons why I asked if they had done like workflow analysis, you know, where are things working well, where are they not? You know, do we have the right staff in the right positions? Do we have any gaps? You know, what kind of recommendations can you make? So, doing an assessment of our operations will be enormously beneficial to the work that we will be doing moving forward. So, the company, and specifically, the president of the company would be the person that would be working with us. And she has a very extensive background in this area and is well-respected, not just in this community, but nationally recognized for her work in this area. So, I feel very confident that the work and the report that we would get would be very helpful to us as we look to our future.
Nice to have an objective look from somebody experienced who's coming in, takes a fresh look.
And she worked in municipal side. Also, if you read her resume, she spent some time on the municipal side. She, you know, that's, she started her career on the municipal side of the house and then she transitioned to business, school business. And then she became a superintendent. So, she's done a whole lot of work in areas that we're really seeking some good, solid advice.
I also thought the compensation was fair.
Would you like a motion on that?
I would like, I think that it's appropriate for you to take some action.
So, I'd like to seek a motion to accept Lisa's resignation as per the terms of the agreement that's been worked out and also to retain Mary, I forget her last name.
Delai.
Delai on interim contracting basis per the terms set forth in the documents in our materials.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? And I just wanna thank Susan, so people realize, Susan's done yeoman's work here to put all this together. She doesn't officially start until July 18th. Well, I shouldn't say officially. She's our superintendent of record right now as of July 1st. But my point is, Susan, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done. I know you're doing right by your existing district and working full-time there still to, you know, to properly exit and it's greatly appreciated. We hope you get some days of rest this summer after this period is over. But I know you're excited to be, to be coming on and just doing one thing. But thank you. And? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you.
And so, Susan, I don't know if you had anything further you wanted to share with us on your report?
I did, well, I thought in terms of next steps, one of the things, and I, you know, I don't think there's any need to take immediate action on the shared service arrangement, but I do feel like there's a need to have a conversation about that. And one of the things, there's many things, when I've read through their letter to us a few times. And I've had some conversation with Lisa and Meredith before she left as well. And I have not taken any kind of a deep dive into this. But one of the, a couple of things that he said were things that I totally agree with. Just even on my first look seat at the operations. It is clear to me that shared services can mean a lot of things. And one of the things that happened, as he so well-described, was that a school business administrator does not equal finance director. Those are, it's a piece of what a school business administrator does. But a school business administrator in a school district does all of your operational pieces, not just finance. And so, what happened here, I think there was a good idea here. I'm all about saving taxpayer dollars. I've, you know, made a career of saving millions of dollars for taxpayers. So, it's at a core value of mine. But another core value of mine is getting the job done well. And nobody is served by operations that are not done well. And so, there was a big price that was paid because in this organization, perhaps on the town side as well, I can't speak to that, when this was merged. Because the operations piece of what a business administrator does no longer was maintained. That will cost you more money than a few dollars that you save, perhaps, or we're trying to save. So, what I've done here, and I'm not gonna go through it in any kind of depth, but I thought it might be beneficial to help the board at least, try to understand what school business administrators do. And perhaps a little the difference between what a traditional structure looks like and what is, what a typical, just a typical model of school administration looks like. So, your first page here is like a sample of what a private sector typical organization chart would look like. So, you have your chief executive and then you have your chief of human resources and chief financial officer and chief of operations and chief information person and chief this and director of that, right? You have all, this whole layer in the private sector of positions. Those positions don't exist as separate positions in a school operation because we're funded by taxpayers. And frankly, there isn't enough resources to be able to do that. And then the second diagram is another example of a different industry where, again, you see your general manager or your chief executive officer and then you see your project managers and your operations department and, you know, your department of HR and your finance department. And I think from what I hear and I gather, what you're trying to do is to create a unified finance department. But an assumption was made that a school business administrator is a finance department. And it's only a fraction of what the school business administrator is. So, if you look at the next page, I gave you what kind of a standard, you know, there's variation, as Al had said earlier. There's variation in what the names of the positions are. But this is a pretty standard organization structure for a school district. And what you see is that you have an assistant superintendent on one side. And under the assistant superintendent's responsibilities, so these are functions, is your business office, which is, I think, what you were trying to perhaps consolidate. But your technology department, your nutrition department or your service department, your maintenance or your buildings and grounds department, your transportation, your risk management, all of those kinds of other functions fall under your business administrator. So, it's not just finance. And I think that's perhaps one assumption that was made that led to some, the demise of the way that you were structured with your shared services. And then the other positions, you know, you have your school principals, your executive director of learning, and this is like usually your assistant superintendent for teaching and learning or curriculum instruction assessment. That's a standard position that you would have in a school district. You would have your ERICA position. So, sometimes it's called student services, pupil personnel services, special education, sometimes it's called that. And sometimes you'll even get a human resource officer, but oftentimes that falls underneath the responsibility of school business official. The table underneath that, there was a study done a few years back and somebody did their dissertation on school business officials. And they looked at school districts of different sizes. And they said, "Okay, here, under the first column is, you know, the enrollment size, but it lists the primary functions that fall under school business administration in a school district." And then there's the size of the organization is next. So, zero to 99 students, 999 students, 1,000 to 3,500. So, we'd fit into that category. But I'm just trying to give you some information about the amount of time the person spends doing these various different tasks. And the point I'm trying to make is that it's different than a finance director. And so, if we want to have a conversation in the long run with the towns about how to share, what shared services means, I think we have to be clear about what we need as a school district to run. And we have to be running our school district well in order to be able to then have the conversation about what can be done. I don't disagree with Don that if you take a $25 million organization and you add $15 million, that's the range of organizations I've been running for 30 years. Could one operation do that in the long run? 40 million? Yeah, but you have to have the right people and the right positions. I run a $40 million operation that I'm leaving right now. I have more staff than you have. It's run well. Impeccable audits. We save millions of dollars because I have highly qualified people in the positions. We save money. qualified people in the positions. We save money, not in the way that you might think. We save money when we go out to borrow money. We are on top of our bids so that we're getting the best price and the best value for every dollar that we spend. I spent, I saved millions of dollars. I've never cost a taxpayer a dollar in salary because we have well-run operations. And so what I would like to see is that we get ourselves working well and then enter into a conversation about how can we then add to that so that we can save everyone, every tax dollar. Because this is what I believe. Every dollar we save in operations goes into the classroom for our students. Every dollar we save on the operation side, I don't want money going into the operation. I don't want one more dollar going into the operations. I want every dollar to go to the students. And so in order to do that, we have to do what we do well. And Mary will help us to be able to understand where those gaps are and what action we need to take in order to get us in the position to be able to do that. The other thing he said that I totally agree with is you can't have more than one boss. You cannot do that. I guess in my mind, at least conceptually, I would think, because they're so much smaller than we are, that maybe they could outsource to us. If we're running our, if we're on cycle, there's cycles to everything in business. And I don't care if you're private, I spent 10 years in the private sector, so believe me, I understand. There's cycles in business. If you can get into your cycles, then you can, then operations happen. And we're not in cycles right now, we're off-cycle. If you're in cycle and you're, and you're processing your warrants in a timely fashion, like every other week, every other week, every other week, to add, if you're, if you're at that place, to add another warrant to do the town is not a big deal. The problem is if you're off-cycle, like he said, and you're just spitballing against the wall and running warrant here and there, everybody's always in chaos.
Yes.
And you can never get into an efficient rhythm and cycles. Once we can get ourselves into the cycle, I can absolutely see no problem with adding the warrants to the town, to our docket. So what? I wouldn't even care personally if we charged the towns, who cares? If we get the right staff in the right place and we build the capacity over time, people will have the natural capacity to do it when they know how to do their jobs well. So, and I know this because I've lived it. So I just wanted to start to provide you with some material and have a little bit of, you know, maybe learning, hopefully, about what is school business administration? Because I think it's nebulous. Most people, I didn't know. I came from the private sector. I didn't know what a school business administrator did. And I've learned firsthand, it's a lot. They do a lot.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of positions. We have one person and you want to hire well on that position. It'll save you, it'll save you millions of dollars in the end. So right now, you know, we're not operating well on our side. A lot of things aren't getting done. I think we see it all over the place. I think we see it in our HR area. I think we see it in, you know, our inability to get timely information to make decisions. And it's not a person fault. This is a system failure here. And, and there's ways to start to move forward from here. But I think it's important to not, to not make the same assumptions you did the last time and to start by first getting our house in order so that then we can have an intelligent conversation about what really makes sense for everyone.
And I think what I like about this is, right now, you started that communication. This has something, we can all look at this and then it's in the back of our minds. So when this does come up again, we actually have some information to start with. And it's all about communication.
So this is, so I gave you the standards for what a school business administrator, this is the international standards for what that person does. And it gives it broken down by area and the roles and responsibilities. So Mary will be able to go and take these standards and look at our operations and give us an assessment about where we, where we're doing well and where we're falling down. So at least you have that to kind of look over in the interim.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? And we'll, you know, we'll be discussing this further as we go along, but, you know, I think this is, this is a great start. And, you know, one, with everything is an opportunity. And I firmly believe in what Don said about learning, you know, from, from what we've done there. You know, it's not a failure. I mean, look, and one thing that hasn't been said here, but I think, I think every, I hope, hopefully, most people understand it, everything that's been tried or attempted has been for the right reasons. It's, it's, it was the execution that was wanting. But everybody has the right motivations in mind, right? In terms of operating efficiently, saving tax dollars and having to allocate the tax dollars where they'll do the most good for kids. So, I mean, I think that, we need to be clear about that because it's, you know, it's not, it's, it didn't work out, but it worked out for, you know, reasons unrelated to our good motivations. So, but thank you, Susan, for putting all this together. We'll, we'll read it and sure, we'll, we'll continue to talk about it. This is out of order a little bit. So, so I think next, we met tonight with the candidates for the school board vacancy. Until next, that's a vacancy until next March. There were three candidates. Want to thank them all for coming in. And I would seek a motion to pick a candidate from one of the three. And that person will join us at the next meeting and be with us through March. So I'm seeking a motion. Not all at once.
I, I'm going to just start by saying how lucky we are to have three individuals that were willing to step up and, and work with us. And it was not easy. And I encourage all three of those people to continue to be part of working with this community. I'm going to make a motion to accept, to promote, what's the word I'm looking for?
To nominate.
Nominate. Thank you. Nominate Jen Weislerquist.
Is there a second? Any, any further discussion?
I just echo what Elizabeth said. We had three excellent candidates who, you know, all of us are here for one reason, for student-focused stuff. We come about it a different way, but there was a passion in each of them. They exhibited in their desire to do things for the community and I appreciate them. They're stepping up.
As I said, I wish we could expand it to seven because I think each, each, each one of the, of the candidates would do an excellent job and help us out a great deal. And I hope they remain interested in, and there are elections to come. Anything further? If nothing, all unanimous? I have on here under discussion items, some are hiring.
I have them to bring forward tonight.
Okay, thank you.
But I would ask that you accept the resignations.
Yeah, we have one more resignation that we haven't accepted yet, and that's of Assistant Principal Matt Foster. He submitted his resignation. I want to congratulate Matt and thank him and congratulate him. He's taken a position as a principal, which is the next step in his, well-deserved next step in his career in Maine. Matt, I got to know a little bit while he was here. I hear about Matt. You know, he's, he's going to be, he's going to be, he's going to be an excellent principal and, and beyond. But seek a motion to accept Matt's resignation?
Second.
Any further discussion or comment?
Just thank you. Again, how do you thank, thank all the people that are leaving this year for putting up with all of us the last two years? And I just appreciate the time and effort everybody gave. And I, I do agree with you, he's going to be excellent as a principal.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? We've already talked about the MRI report and the next steps. Really nothing to, to vote on. What we will, I think, need to do at the next meeting is consider, we do have a memorandum of understanding that's outstanding and still exists in theory, technically. And I think, I thought it was appropriate that we discussed it for the first time here tonight, had, had Don in, and give folks a chance to, you know, to mull it over. And maybe we'll bring that up for a vote at the next time, most likely to suspend or terminate. Or, I know that on the town side, they've already sort of moved on and hired somebody to fulfill their needs. So.
Is it the intent of the town, the school, to terminate the memorandum of understanding on the facilities director as well?
That, that has not been raised.
Now, we need to address, I think we need to address that.
Okay.
I mean, it expires.
Yeah, well, that, and that's fine. So maybe, Al, we can, we can, if it expires, we've got to do one of two things, either, either re-up.
Well, that's my point. The discussion needs to continue.
When does it expire, Al?
It's got to be pretty soon.
Yeah, I don't know, Al.
It's been well over a year.
Yeah.
Oh, their, their annual?
I don't know off the top of my head, but, but can we put it on, let's put it on the agenda for the, for the 25th. And then we'll, we'll talk about it one way or the other. In between, we'll, we'll get the, we'll get the agreement and the document and we'll understand clearly when that, that's up.
Can you, can you find those documents?
And frankly, whether it's up or not, I think we owe it to the organization, his director, towards himself, things have been changed there as well. So I think regardless of whether it's contractual issue, I think it's good communication.
True. Thanks, Al. All right. So now let's, let's move on to action items, approval of minutes. We've got several. Can I have a motion? Maybe we can do them all in one because I think we were all there for each one?
Yes.
No, Al wasn't there for one, so we can't do that.
Oh.
Hold on.
I think we can do the first two.
First two collectively?
I move that we approve the minutes, public and non-public, for the June, for June 12th and June 20th, 2019.
Second.
Any edits, comments? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? And then a motion on the June 26th, public and non-public.
I move that we accept the public and non-public minutes from June 26th, 2019.
So moved.
I understand.
No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Elizabeth, do you want to read the manifest?
Oh goodness.
Or can?
I seek a motion to approve total of all man, no, I am moving, see, I say that every time, I apologize. I move that we accept the total manifests of $2,400,987.99.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next, on action items is Dee. And Susan, I did send you a note today. I had a couple of extra thoughts, of course, but I, but I can, I can, I can, I think I can remember them. On, Susan gave us a proposed entry plan, which I thought was excellent. I had, I had read it a first time and a couple of weeks ago, and then just read it again literally last night. And the only things, and, and I'm going to apologize in advance for maybe getting into the weeds or, you know, or maybe these are subsidiary points to stuff you already have, Susan, in there. But one thing that came to mind, and also thinking about Lisa's, you know, tenure with us through, you know, for the certain days of the end of summer, is there are oodles and oodles of critical dates, calendar things that, you know, statutory or budget-wise or, you know, contract-wise that we've got to think about during the year. And I'm sure you have those in mind. But, and many of them will inform what's on our meeting agendas as a board. So over the next, you know, as part of the entry period, maybe one of the goals should be to sort of sketch out what those dates are. And they're, they're dates that we frequently do every year. Now Lisa has peculiar knowledge about New Hampshire, you know, you know, timelines on, on budget, you know, that we may be able, that was probably part of the debriefing aspect with her and all that and other dates. But there are just so many of those on. And if we could, you know, have our arms around those and, and start to sketch out what needs to go on each of our school board meeting agendas, the stuff that we know now, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Boy, I had some, I had two other good ones, at least I thought so. But I thought, I thought your idea about a mentor to, was, was great, just to, you know, a New Hampshire-focused person to help you navigate the differences between New Hampshire and Mass was great. And also to develop networks, that may be a next three-month type of activity. Boy, what's the other one?
And you did that when you went to the superintendent retreat or whatever they, whatever they call it, right?
They had their conference. I did attend their conference.
Yeah.
I had to leave the day very early because of needs here in the district that I get to attend to.
But then you got to meet, so that would be great if you could find a mentor.
Yes, I did. I got to meet a number of people, including at the state level association and some local superintendents who I've reached out to actually already.
Great.
And this, this next one might be in the weeds for sure, is, we're going to be kind of building the plane and flying it somewhat as we go here. But we talked about, you know, performing a compensation analysis for administrators and staff and perhaps others because we're going to be into the budget season and there may be things we want to do there, you know? And it's, obviously, it's going to be part of the budget. And, and I didn't know if that's really part of an entry plan. It's a thought that came to mind, something that, that Mary might, you know, help us with. This is, you know, this is where we are at, this is where we're at now with our compensation scheme. Because we've talked about it before, you know, we've talked about it in light of the, you know, the 1% thing and the concern of losing folks and all that. And it just strikes me that timing-wise, it's something that's going to be right upon us because we're going to, if we want to do anything, make any changes, it's going to be, we're going to need to have that, I think, that, that analysis. And it's going to be, you know, part of the budget discussion.
There is a fund, and I think it's up to $28,000. I'm sure Lisa can show you where it is. I call it the Jim Hayes Fund. But that used to be what he would, people would go through their reviews and he would give your, what you would get. And it came out of that one fund.
So my broader, my broader point was this, is just that, and I don't know if it belongs on here or not, Susan. And I just want to raise the notion that, you know, that, because we've all sort of discussed it, I think it's an issue. I think it's, whether it belongs on this plan or otherwise, it's, I don't, something I don't think we can wait on.
Yeah.
Whatever we do in terms of action is a different story, but I think it'd be helpful to know where we're at.
I would see that as more, when we have the conversation, well, so part of this will lead us into some of our next meetings in our retreat, you know? One of the things we're going to do as an activity is goal-setting for the year, and I think that would be a goal, more than an entry plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that might be a common goal that we have. And then we can talk about how are we going to meet that goal? Do we want to hire, continue, you know, once we get somebody on board? You know, we could continue to hire Mary, you know, to do certain projects if we wanted to, or somebody else, it doesn't have to be, but.
Like a compensation analysis?
Exactly. We can, we can have some person that can either do that, targeted thing. But we can talk about how are we going to accomplish our goals. But I would see that third one as being
Yep.
more of a goal that we would set for us for the upcoming year than it would be an entry plan activity for me. I think also identifying the timelines and create a monthly calendar, I think that's really important. I did reach out to somebody I'm using as a mentor right now from New Hampshire to see, in Massachusetts, we have a calendar that's prepared for us of all those important dates and deadlines by our state association. But unfortunately, New Hampshire's state association does not do that.
Live for your dying.
I did, I did learn that there, the state has like their critical dates in, in one place, and he told me what it was called. I haven't had a chance to look it up, but at least I would know what state reporting deadlines are.
That's surprising because I, I mean, it's clear, I know on the town side, the publication talks about when you have to have budgets in and so forth. You can't find one for the school side?
Not, not that I'm aware of. Not comprehensive that has all of the deadlines. So I think that it's really important. And I can certainly, one of the things I could ask Lisa for as part of her transition plan was to give me a list of those kinds of things. Tell me short-term, long-term, what you're working on, what the dates and deadlines are and the timelines necessary to complete those various tasks. So that is something that she and I have already talked about from her perspective. But that's only going to be on the school business side. That's not going to attend to the academic side, cycles. So, I mean, I, I hear you. And I'm, nothing's being passed on to me in that way, but we will create, a friend of mine calls it the get-hit-by-the-bus list.
Right. Right, right.
And we need that, and so we're going to start to create that.
Yep.
But I think it's super important.
One thing that I appreciated, Susan, sort of, you know, when I was going through, just having a physical plan to rest a look at is, is beneficial, but also, you know, just showing your expertise, looking at things, not reinventing the wheel totally. Are there people who have provided us with some data that we can use to apply it to us, which is what you did, and you said at the end, here's where some of these ideas came from, and I built upon them, and that's excellent, because people do these things all the time, have written books on it. So I appreciate that you have, you know, used that education for yourself in terms of things you have learned to apply it to your job, and showed us that you did it that way. I appreciate that very much.
Any other thoughts or questions? Susan, I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, and if you think of, like, I don't know that I have everything perfect here, and this can certainly be a living document, but what I'd like is for the board to accept the entry plan, because I need your support in order to be staying focused.
Right.
To accomplish this.
Right.
You know, which is what I was pushing back a little bit with Don, is, is not that I, at, at the core of who I am, don't agree that that's important, and if you want that done, but if I spend all of my time trying to make that work, I'm not going to have an opportunity to do this work.
Well, that's why your point about overall goals is, well, take it.
Yeah.
You know, this is a piece of the entry period. We're going to sit down in our upcoming retreats in the next few weeks to come up with the overall goals for the remainder of the time past this entry period.
Exactly.
So.
And it'll also help focus so that we know what we're going to try to accomplish this year, because we already have a lot on our plate.
Yeah.
Right, right. If, if nothing further, can I seek a motion to approve the superintendent entry plan?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
And, thank you very much. So our last item that appears is nominations.
Did, did we accept the assistant principal change?
We did, yep. So that's done. Oh.
Recording.
Is, there are no hirings for professional staff this time around, so we do need a recording secretary unless Penny wants to join in, she's shaking her head, no. So we, we had one application, Sarah Giacchino, she's a currently a para with the district and has experience doing it, and I think Elliot or Kittery Maine for the, for the town board over there, she knows how to do minutes, and, boy, we need somebody, because we got another meeting, building committee meeting next week, and another, yeah. Penny agrees. And, and then we got another meeting on the twenty-fifth, so, and we put this out for advertisement, and there wasn't a lot of interest, Sarah was the only applicant, so I'd seek a motion to retain Sarah Giacchino as, as the district's recording secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Penny, will you get in touch with her and coordinate all that? Yeah, thanks. And I don't see anything further on the agenda, do the board members have anything? Susan?
No, but I do, I do want to make note that I will not be able to attend a meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay. I don't think you're going to miss much. Yeah, it's, should be uneventful anyways, so. Yes. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Should we get these back?